All right, I got 6:30 on the dot, so we'll go ahead and start. I'd like to call the Buncombe County School Board for this September 5th meeting to order. My name is Chip Craig, I'm the Vice Chair, and I'm filling in for our Chair Bob Reinhardt, who is unable to attend tonight. We're gonna start off with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. And at this time, I'd like to recognize the Owen High School ROTC that will present the colors. Please rise.
Right, face, carry, close, forward, march. Mark time, march. Cover, halt, left, face, present, colors.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry, colors. Right, face, forward, march.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Is that better? Better on the microphone? Couple things, we have a public comment in the middle of our agenda, and if you want to sign up, jam blunt in that corner, please put your name and address. Public comments limited to three minutes. We met as a board in a closed session at 5:30 to discuss confidential personnel information, and also attorney-client privilege, and we ended about 6:15 or so. At this point, I'd like to approve the agenda. I believe there's some items that need to be moved from the consent agenda.
Yes, I'd like to move the Child Nutrition Procurement Plan, as well as the AB Tech Plan.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the approval for board member training as well.
Okay. All right, so we'll move all three of those into the action. I guess, is there an action for the...
We'll make an action.
Yeah, we'll make an action. Okay, I'll move all three of those into the action agenda. With those changes, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. At this point, I'll turn it over to our Superintendent, Dr. Baldwin, for his comments.
Evening, everyone. We've really had a good start to this school year, because I've had an opportunity to visit classroom after classroom, and it just amazes me, it's almost like we simply just picked up where we left off last spring. And I think there's a reason for that, and so I want to recognize our teachers, our principals, our staff throughout this entire system, because the only way that a smooth transition and adjustment occurs is through the dedication, planning, and efforts of that staff. So, a number of those I see out in the audience, a special thank you to your efforts. The STEM High School renovation is currently going full speed. I just fairly check with him every morning, and I think we are continuing to be on schedule. We recently made a presentation regarding our STEM High School to our Economic Development Coalition, our Chamber of Commerce, we were very pleased with that presentation. And as I've noted on so many occasions, one of the non-negotiables regarding our new STEM High School will be a strong connection for our students between that school and our businesses and professional agencies. It's certainly our vision that any student that enters that high school will have tremendous opportunities to get real-world experience in apprenticeships and internships, and to do that, we must establish strong connections with those businesses and agencies, and at this point in time, I feel we are well on our way to do that. Working with our New Schools Project, which is a national model, in fact, that is the foundation of our very successful early college, we are in preparation to begin more roadshows. If you recall, last spring, we went out to all six districts and made presentations, and so we are preparing to do that over the next several weeks. Regarding our new STEM High School, the location, which is 175 Bingham Road, I'm very pleased to provide you, board, as well as to make the announcement to our public, we have just recently received results from our testing that took place on July 29th, and similar to the February 5th report that we provided to the board and the public, we have testings that indicated non-detect status for all the contaminants that were tested. Of the five locations and five samples that were taken, two of those were in what we call deep groundwater monitoring wells, and three were what is called permanent sub-slab locations. And we looked for soil gas vapor testing, and actually, that testing took place below the concrete level of the building. As I've said prior, I'm very pleased with this board, as I think everyone is aware, we've had concerns brought to us regarding the safety aspect, it had its origins across the road with the Square D plant in that location, and even though NC DNR, as we talked with them as the official state agency, this board went over and above what they would recommend for minimum standards, and as a result, we have a four-year contract to continue this monitoring of the site, just to ensure our public that this is a safe facility. Mrs. Jackson, at this time, if you'll go ahead and, although I provided those results, so each board member has that information in front of you, the summary test data results, and certainly anyone in the public that would request that, that will be made available to you. Last spring, our maintenance department, in coordination with county inspections and the Fire Marshal's Office, we began a series of school-based inspections that included all 40 of our school campuses. This was a very comprehensive approach that was taken, in fact, I think it would rival any such process that occurred in a school system anywhere in North Carolina. And at this time, I'm going to, I see in the back, I think we have Mr. Jerry Thehan, who is our Director of Emergency Management, that is where our Fire Marshal's Office is supervised, and Mr. Thehan, I'm gonna ask you, if you would for us, just give us a summary of the efforts that were made this summer with that team to go in and re-inspect. My understanding that the vast majority of issues that were raised were falling to a category called low voltage wiring, and I also believe that's computer wiring, internet wiring, that's telephone, and if you have a PA system, which I think all of our schools do, some of our principals use it more than others, that's located above the ceiling, that was the majority of those issues. And just out of curiosity too, if you can for me, I remember as a principal being at Valley Springs Middle School, and it was Net Day. It was Net Day across all of our Buncombe County schools, in fact, Net Day was a national phenomenon, and what happened is we were provided with internet wiring, and I think we had over 100 bodies in Valley Springs that went above the ceiling, some of us for the first time ever, and we ran wire. So, I just wonder, how did that impact what was inspected this summer and spring? Did I throw too much at you, Mr. Thehan?
Okay. Members of the board...
Do you mind going over there, just since we're on TV? Thank you.
Hey, members of the board, and Mr. Superintendent, we did spend a lot of time, and I'm gonna speak particularly from the Fire Marshal's side of the operation, because that's a part that I'm directly involved in, even though we had building inspectors from the county and other personnel also. And as an example, from the Fire Inspection's Office, the fire inspector that handled most of this, Terry Gentry, and in a couple of cases, some of the other two inspectors, but we spent between 350 and 400 hours inspecting these buildings, or re-inspecting them, I guess you'd say, but we normally do that twice a year. Low voltage wiring, and that was the biggest thing, the biggest, I guess you'd say, a code infraction that we found, and there's nothing wrong with the wiring, the problem was it wasn't tied every four feet, which the code requires, you know, and when you're getting free labor, you just don't always tie stuff every four feet, but anyway, that was the biggest problem that we had. Even with some of the PA system wiring, I know that there were some cases where you might have a, what they call a bushing, it might be off of the wire, and all that means is if that bushing, some of the speakers is not there, the afternoon announcements or morning announcements or whatever couldn't be made, the speaker wouldn't work. But as far as the low voltage wiring, there was nothing wrong with the wiring itself, either telephone line, internet wiring, or anything else. In some cases, they were bound code violations or debris, and what, for the most part, if you had somebody come in and they're working up in the ceiling, and it's hot like it's been the last few days, and they left a Coke can or something up there, that's probably as debris. So, anyway, the enforcement part of this, even though you see code violations, doesn't mean that these schools are not safe. It doesn't mean that there was any thing really serious as far as life safety issues, I think we found two from our standpoint, one of them was a cord, and some of you may have seen that picture in the paper, a cord that had been on a welder, had been not installed, in fact, the plug hadn't been put back on it properly. And in another case, a tree had fallen on one of your classroom buildings, which I think was used as storage. But when it fell, there was enough honeysuckle vines attached to it, and it let it down easy, and I don't think you had any damage to the building. I don't know if you'd call that a real hazard or whatever, life safety hazard, but anyway, that was one of them. My personal opinion, and I am the Fire Marshal for Buncombe County, you know, with two life safety issues that didn't amount to anything serious, and looking at these other violations, these students are a lot safer in these schools than they are out on the road. If you got any questions, I'll be glad to answer them for you, but, you know, everybody did spend a lot of time doing this.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a couple of questions? You mentioned life safety, and if you ask, there's 50 people in the room, you might get 50 different answers on what that is. I have an opinion as to what that is. From your perspective as a professional, as it relates to safety, building, what are life safety issues? What does that mean as it relates to being a Fire Marshal?
If you had an issue where you had something that could easily catch fire, or could maybe be in danger of falling from, maybe for construction, or something that would injure, or possibly seriously injure, or even have a fatality involved, that would be a life safety issue. If a fire alarm is not working, for example, that's a life safety issue.
And so you inspect it before you build it? Items that were noted have been or are being corrected, is that...
That's correct, that's correct.
And as such, do we need to continue to inspect the building?
Well, they're inspected on a twice-a-year basis anyway, but as far as going through and doing what we spent literally hundreds of hours doing this year, and I don't know yet what the cost is gonna be, I know what the cost for the re-inspections from county to the school board's gonna be, but I have no idea what your cost has been, but I think everything that's been found is gonna be corrected, and in the future, I don't see where it would be necessary to go back and spend all that time doing the same thing over again. When we come in and inspect them, for example, we don't do, the inspections we do are non-invasive, and what that means is, we don't lift these ceiling tiles and look up in there to see what's what, you know, we don't take a wall apart or anything like that, because that has been inspected, you know, previously, so there shouldn't be any reason to do that again. I haven't seen a wire hanging down, of course, do that.
And you look then, I guess, for things in the course of normal two inspections a year, and nobody has a system contract with a third, an outside entity to do a third inspection? Not only inspecting the things that are non-invasive, but you're also looking for telltale signs that there may be some other things perhaps that are wrong.
That's true.
My point is, or my thought is, that safety's an ongoing issue, and what the system does, what our employees do, as well as you, Mr. Gentry, and others from outside, should give the public, and I know it does for me as a board member, a level of comfort and good feeling, if you will, that our schools are safe, and they are safe for our students and our faculty and our staff to be in on a daily basis. Now, I think it's important that we say that, and we say it with the understanding of what's been done to ensure it, and with the understanding that it is an ongoing process, and that things will continue to be looked at and inspected, and we'll continue to ensure that the safety is there, and if we find things, or your office finds things, you're gonna point them out to us, and we'll take care of it.
Yeah, one thing as an example that came up was in some of the teachers' lounges, for example, there may be some people here involved with that, but where you've got microwaves and refrigerators, if you've got a refrigerator, for example, that you might have brought from your house, but if it says on the back of that refrigerator, household use on it, then you can't have it in a public building. Same way the microwave, or if it doesn't say anything on it, according to the code, you can't have it in the building. There may not be anything wrong with it, but if it doesn't have a sticker of that designation on it, then that creates...
And the reason for that is, you only have, I would guess, the reason, is you only have two classifications of buildings, either residential structure...
Residential.
Or it's commercial.
Right.
And there's no in-between, there are various types of residential, but if it's not coded or labeled to be in your home, or to be in that commercial setting, it's not supposed to be there. And I think a rational person, and most people on the street would understand, that I, and I've done this, my wife and I donated, we decided we needed a new microwave in the house, and we donated the microwave to Irvin High School. Nothing's wrong with it, it works perfectly fine, and it's a free problem outlet, a lot of it's wrong, it's a free problem outlet, and it works fine and causes no problem. I wouldn't consider that to be a life safety issue, or a safety issue in terms of the operations of our schools, but I also understand that we're gonna have to address some things as it relates to the code, because we've come under the microscope, if you will, from the media, and now we're dealing with this.
That's true, and I'm sure it's cost you, it don't cost you a lot of money to follow those guidelines.
That's all I have.
Concerning the microwaves and refrigerators in public buildings, do you have any idea at the health department, at the courthouse, at other fire departments that are public buildings, where these microwaves and refrigerators are, are there a problem with those locations too?
I would say that's a universal problem, that's why you need them to...
Well, the point I'm bringing, the reason I'm bringing it up, I was at one of our local hospitals recently, making delivery for our business, and walked into their little break room, and noticed that the refrigerator and microwave were not NSF, so it just exists, not unique to the school system, it just exists.
Yeah, it's not, it's not unique to y'all, by anybody.
Ms. Baldwin, you have a question?
Yes, I wanted to know if you'd have gone back through the fire inspection reports, and the electrical inspection reports that are done twice a year, and when you went into schools to inspect, to make sure all the changes had been made that were recommended by the Fire Marshal.
Yeah, if we go back, we'll be taking that list against what we've come up with this summer, make sure that everything is in order.
So you didn't take that and use it as a roadmap, when you were doing inspections?
Would you repeat that?
So, you're saying you didn't take those reports with you into the schools when you were doing the inspection?
We will be taking them.
Also, did you look at the work orders from the maintenance department, as well as contracts from outside contractors, knowing we had 16 contractors with multiple jobs that didn't get permits and inspections? Did you use those work orders and contracts to find the jobs that didn't get permitted and inspected?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that we did, unless it applied directly to the fire code, now whatever the building department did, I have no idea.
Okay, so Mr. Stone's not here tonight, from the permit office, I take it, to address that issue.
Yeah, permit office, we matched them, can address that for you.
So, the code, as far as the appliances goes, that's always been in place, that they have to, if they can say household use, but they have to say commercially use as well.
I'm not sure how long that's been in place, they make the changes occasionally to the state building code and the state fire code, I can't address how long it's been there.
I know, when I contacted the Department of Insurance, they told me that that was definitely the code, that was the law.
Yeah, that's what they did, pretty well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thehan, we appreciate your time.
Thank you, thanks, sir.
I'll take just a little time to reference something publicly. At our April School Board meeting, Maintenance Director, Mr. Greg Fox, I think Greg is here tonight. As you know, we have a session for public comment, and in that particular session, there was a former employee, the name of Mr. Steve Stone, who accused Mr. Fox of committing several very serious offenses while serving his administrative role, and due to that, due to those accusations actually alluding to possible criminal violations, I have requested the Buncombe County Sheriff's Department to conduct an independent, and I assure you, and I assure the board and the public, totally independent of anyone in the school system, to conduct an independent investigation of those accusations. And I have received a notification on August 14th from the Sheriff's Department, directly from Sheriff Van Duncan, that the investigation had been completed, and there were no criminal allegations whatsoever that were substantiated. Furthermore, the investigating officer that was assigned to that investigation, he has offered to speak directly to the board to provide further details, and Mr. Campbell, I want you to know, I did receive permission from Mr. Fox to even reference this, because this is, is specific to a personnel issue, and I would imagine that if the board would like for that investigator to report to them, that would need to probably be done in closed session, am I correct? Okay, so that is available to the board. It is my hope that each and every board member, that you'll personally, in your own way, recognize the outstanding job, the integrity, I think sometimes that's a missing word in public service these days in this environment, but the integrity that Mr. Fox has as a director, I hope you will recognize him. I find the intent to damage anyone's reputation publicly to certainly be inexcusable, but certainly someone with the reputation of Mr. Greg Fox, so those allegations were made public, and the Superintendent made public allegations toward one of our staff members, so I think they're justified that I provide a public response to that. At this time, I would like to introduce our new Child Nutrition Director, she's really not new, if you've been in this school system, she's a returnee to Buncombe County schools, and that's Ms. Lisa Payne, and along with providing the board with an update regarding the entire child nutrition program, especially their budget status, I believe she has a very important announcement that many of us on the board have been waiting to hear about, and that might have to do with a la carte items.
So, should I start with Little Debbie, or Gone? Good evening.
I was trying to set you up with just a few more words, but I'm gonna turn this over to Ms. Payne, we're glad that you're here.
Good evening, Vice President, Vice Chair Craig, members of the board, Dr. Baldwin. It is wonderful to be serving Buncombe County students again, and I'm very much at home in the position as Child Nutrition Director, and just thrilled to be here in front of you to share some of the things we have accomplished since July 1st. So I was very blessed to come back to an amazing staff, who we, I knew 90% of them, and we have rallied together, and we have shared our strengths, we have shared our weaknesses, and we've certainly rallied together to serve the students. So that being said, I have a brief PowerPoint presentation, and I will start. And what you see, the first thing that you see, and this was a logo that was adopted before I came, prior to my leaving and before I came, but I really like it, because it's children with their hands, holding hands, and it shows the diversity of the students that we feed in Buncombe County. A little bit about our revenue, how the child nutrition program works, and this is 2012, 2013 data. Our federal funding, 65%, our students, 30%, and that's the Payne student, local 1%, the state provides .202%, federal, $3.01 reimbursement per free child, $2.61 per reduced term, and we are a self-operating entity. Our expenses, labor currently, 42.68%, food, 45.73%, and this is on each dollar, supplies, 2.45% equipment, 1.5% other, 7.64%. And this is what, this is the Governing Act, the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act 2010, that dictates what I do as a director, which is ensure that as a public servant and a steward of public funds, that we comply with everything the federal government has required. We ensure students are offered both fruits and vegetables every day of the week, require all grain products to be whole grain rich, allow only fat-free or low-fat milk, flavored milk must be fat-free, limit calories based on the grade of the student, increase efforts to reduce sodium, saturated fat, and eliminate trans fats. Current trends that are popular right now in child nutrition, obviously, in the news all the time, prevention of childhood obesity, promoting appropriate growth and health, wellness plans, healthy a la carte items, aid schools in meeting academic goals, increase availability of fruits and vegetables, and we are seeing a huge growth in the area of gluten-free and other specialized diets. We're using technology to increase participation, we're excited to say that our population can now apply the free and reduced meals online, and have 24-hour turnaround, and have also, if you haven't had a chance to look, please visit our Buncombe County website, we've done some marketing there. We're looking at the Universal Breakfast Program, which has been in place two years, Summer Meals Programs, this is the second summer, it did well, very successful. We're just learning about an... Supplies, 2.45% equipment, 1.5% other, 7.64%. And this is what, this is the governing act, the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act 2010 that dictates what I do as a director, which is ensure that as a public servant and a steward of public funds, that we comply with everything the federal government has required. We ensure students are offered both fruits and vegetables every day of the week, require all grain products to be whole grain rich, allow only fat-free or low-fat milk. Flavored milk must be fat-free, limit calories based on the grade of the student, increase efforts to reduce sodium, saturated fat, and eliminate trans fats. Current trends that are popular right now in child nutrition, obviously in the news all the time, prevention of childhood obesity, promoting appropriate growth and health wellness plans, healthy a la carte items, aid schools in meeting academic goals, increase availability of fruits and vegetables. And we are seeing a huge growth in the area of gluten-free and other specialized diets. We're using technology to increase participation. We're excited to say that our population can now apply the free and reduced meals online and have 24-hour turnaround and have also, if you haven't had a chance to look, please visit our Buckingham County website, we've done some marketing there. We're looking at the universal breakfast program, which has been in place two years. Summer meals programs, this is the second summer, it did well, very successful. We're just learning about an at-risk supper program, don't know any details, but just heard that buzzword a few days ago. Very conscious about employee safety, food safety and security through our HACCP plan and equipment maintenance. So I want to boast a little bit about my team in the central office and certainly most importantly, the hard-working staff in the site level and the schools and the cafeterias. Things that we have accomplished since July 1st. Little David cakes, Little Debbie cakes are gone, gone, gone. And high-calorie beverages are no longer offered, increasing the nutritional value of a la carte items, which has led to about a 30% reduction in what we are offering to the students to buy above and beyond the meal. Returning to a higher mix of site-prepared recipes and a reduction of convenience products with emphasis on whole grain, local seasonal produce and preparation methods that increase, that decrease fat and sodium while increasing eye and flavor appeal. Reallocation of labor, we're taking some of the strengths and weaknesses of our staff. I'm very, very blessed to have Mary Andre on staff as an RD and she is going to be taking our menus because she's so well-versed with the special diet needs and all of the requirements of the Healthy School Act. We've increased the margin of workplace safety, we're supplying our employees with skin-resistant shoes. One of the things I'm most excited about, that I will be serving with the partnering with ASAB, the Appalachian Sustainable Agricultural Project. I've been asked to serve on NCBA Advisory and Council for the North Carolina Department of Agriculture, Children First School Health Advisory Council, which several of our members in the school system serve on as well. The WNC Pediatric Care Collaborative, Maricor, and more. And I would be remiss if I did not say Evelyn Charities is a huge support system to us as well. We are purchasing large equipment to provide school-based staff with the resources they need to prepare healthy meals. My Armenian equipment needs total 284,966 and that's just to fix things that are broken. My goals, our goals as a team for 2013-14, we want to increase meal participation. We want to make sure that we are serving children and that no child is hungry because we all know that a hungry child cannot learn. Provide nutrition education to all students, grow our partnerships with community agencies, grow our partnership with the vendor-broker community and provide leadership training for all child nutrition staff. We also want to increase the availability of local-sourced foods, increase our HACCP resources to ensure food safety and security and through our employees raise the bar, providing excellent customer service, service to our students, our schools, and our community. In my last, not, this is not my close, but a snapshot I wanted to share with you that when I came on July 1st, I ran the figures from 2012-2013, which ended on June 30th. Our breakfast program, out of our population, only 41.6% were participating in the breakfast program. Our lunch program is feeding 68.14. I can't give you a comparison tonight because you don't, you're not able to glean actual figures until the end of October. So I'll have those in November. But I do want to share with you my team's commitment, my team, my commitment to getting back to the fundamentals, which is justice for all and sharing and feeding children in Buckingham County. Questions?
Well, and we'll have a session later on the agenda to talk about the lunch prices.
Thank you, Lisa, thank you. One of our many community outreach efforts toward improving balanced literacy, especially reading literacy for our students can be found in the summer Bookmobile program. And so at this time, I'm going to ask Mrs. Swanger to give us an update. I think we have some, some pretty, pretty interesting figures on how successful this has been for our kids out in our communities.
Yes, sir, Superintendent Baldwin, board members, just a few points of data about our Bookmobile. We've been in place for one year. I have to recognize the work of Janina Nee Remer, who has since retired. I will introduce Anita OMB, she is our new federal programs director, so you'll be seeing her at future meetings. So we'd like to welcome her. The Bookmobile is here to serve two purposes. Summer reading experiences for children that are very intentional. The difference between the Buckingham County Bookmobile and another Bookmobile that you might think of coming from the library would be our students have reading levels that teachers have identified. So students are checking out books on the reading levels that will help them grow literacy. So that eyes on text, the right kind of text will foster them as a reader. So very intentional, we have staff that provide teaching kind of services to make sure that children are checking out the right books. They check out two books, they bring those back and they check out two more. So over the summer, our Bookmobile went all over the county, stopping in community centers, apartment complexes, level home parts, shopping centers, area schools, wherever in need for that community to be served, that's where our Bookmobile went. And 360 students visited the Bookmobile 1,534 times. So 360 students went back and got books over the summer. And they borrowed a total of 3,068 books. So for our first summer and full year, good, good planning and good source of working with our children. During the school year, our kids are in school, so who needs to help with the Bookmobile? We have preschoolers that are coming into our kindergarten classrooms that haven't had the opportunity to touch a book or to read, love to write or to find those basic literacy sessions. So we have four sessions that we go all over the county again and our preschoolers visit the Bookmobile twice a week when they're in their community. And so 71 preschoolers last year visited 207 times. So the purpose is twofold. Elementary students in the summertime when they're outside of the school and then preschool students in preparation for coming to school. So it's a wonderful participation, it's a wonderful grant that Title I is able to offer with help from the foundation as well as some community partners. And it is in a very good time because North Carolina has legislation called Lead to Achieve that says every third grader will be on grade level when they, when they leave third grade and we have to start seeing. Questions? I just was wondering how well the return rate is on books? Well, we, every time the student finishes two books, they get two more. So they're coming over that pattern. And if it's a chapter book, they can have as long as they need. Some kids are coming, every time the Bookmobile drives into the community, some are reading a chapter book that might take a longer time, so it's really hard to compare. Are they able to return books to a school library if they can't make it to the Bookmobile? They can also bring it into the school office, the library, the school library may not be open during the summer and that chief of that principal will get those back to Ms. OMB's team. Is there, are there any fines if they're late or if they're early?
No, absolutely not. We want more books and more hands and, you know, even if we lose a book, it's okay. We want those books to be used in the families' homes. And many of our children teach their parents to read.
So 71 preschoolers during the school year that visit, does this bus make regular stops at daycare centers, for example? And is there plans to increase that number?
Churches, exactly. And because it's one Bookmobile, we might be in the Irwin Anika district for this first session and then we go to the Reynolds district, so there's a rotation.
Are there plans to try to reach more preschoolers now this year?
We certainly hope so, absolutely, the more the better.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Appreciate that Suzanne, that's really some awesome information. I want to stay on the theme of the needs that we have out in our school community. We have a guest here tonight, a friend of the Buckingham County school system, Bill Murdock. Bill, I'm going to ask you to start moving your way up for the sake of time. And Chris, I'm going to ask you to go ahead and put, start our slides. As many of you know, this has been the fifth year for Tools for Schools. That's an effort here in Buckingham County and Asheville City to accumulate as many instructional supplies as possible. In fact, Bill, I think we're on the third year in a row that, I don't know who actually counts these, but I've heard you say this is, this is the third year for a million school supply items. So somebody's out there counting them. But that just reflects symbolically of how this community comes together to help our kids and families in need. But what you're seeing up there is the actual first opportunity for parents and students to line up at the Evelyn Center to receive those supplies. Now let me tell you a couple of stories behind that. Number one, Dr. Adian and I had the opportunity, we got there late. So when we walk up, all of a sudden, we're looking at that line and that line you can see straight all the way from the entrance to Evelyn, which is the back of Westgate, and it loops all the way around Westgate. In fact, if you can imagine this, that's the line to pick up supplies. There was an equal line in terms of number of people that were just simply applying to get into that line. That was an incredible, just again, an incredible vision of the need that was out there. And that particular day, I think, and Bill, I know you started, you started your day, about third day in a row, you started about four o'clock in the morning with Bill and his staff because I think they opened everything up at seven. The story we heard from Ingalls, who had to bring the supply truck in at midnight prior to this morning, is there were two families on the porch behind Evelyn and they were there at midnight, so they would make sure that they got their instructional supplies. What did you think about that? They served that day over 3,000 students and families. In fact, I heard Bill talk about beyond the Tools for Schools, there was the clothing day, first day of school. And I think you set a record there as well, you served over 150 students in clothing. So Evelyn Charities is essential to help us in this school system meet the needs of our kids. And I want you to see this because I can stand here and talk and Bill can talk, but until you see it, you just can't believe it. So Bill, I want to thank you, this was also an event with Ingalls, with Clear Channel. They tag team now five years in a row, incredible success. But don't, please don't forget out there in the public that we continue to have this need. We still have kids coming into our school building with tremendous needs. You heard this from Lisa Payne, until we meet those basic essentials, are they truly going to be able to learn in that classroom? With that, Bill, I want to make sure you have an opportunity to say a few words.
I don't know what else I can add. I said, I think Mr. Coons is what council we had at schools he was. And I believe this year is, I think, 1.4, 1.4 million this year. This is the biggest response Evelyn Charities has had, not only for Tools for Schools, but I think for anything that we have, that we have done. I know a lot of you, so many of you out there know Pat, you were there, you know, you came out and worked and actually I think helped unload the Billmore Baptist trailer. They came in with, Billmore Baptist joined us this year. Right at 1,000 bags of school supplies. You know, I know Chip, I know all of you, Dusty, you know, Ann, you know, Lisa, I know you came into McDonald's, you know, when we were raising money out of the new McDonald's opening. And you know, we're just so very honored, you know, to be part of Buckingham Schools and part of the outreach here. We're just a, we're just a small part, you know, the teachers, the staff, you know, you all do all the great work. We're just kind of, you know, we're just the supporting players. But as, as Dr. Baldwin said, when we started collecting at four o'clock in the morning the week before these pictures were taken, well, I'll take you back five years ago, when Ingalls and Evelyn joined together to do this, we collected school supplies in front of the tourist game and we had three plastic grocery bags full of school supplies and that was all we collected. The next year was our first year that collected a million items and then we've gone, gone out before, you know, from, from that. But Ingalls certainly, WLOS, Clear Channel, Buckingham County Schools, Billmore Baptist Church, Hampton Inn. I mean, it was amazing to see the groups that were coming in, whether they'd bring a pack, children would bring a pack of pencils that use their allowance to buy it and then bring it in. Or to truckloads and manloans like Billmore Baptist, Hampton Inn, and AT&amp;T Telephone Pioneers, 300 backpacks. But the next week when we distributed this, they started lining up before midnight. One lady stood in, stood there for nine hours just to make sure that her daughter would have school supplies to start the night, that nine hours she waited at night. And she, she didn't wait alone, we got there at five, I think it was right, right before five in the morning for the distribution. The line was already from the back of where our office is all the way to CBS. And how they apply is, all they have to do is let us know there was a need. We check them very quickly, make sure the students and children are in the home. So we're not giving something that's going to ship to Colorado or somewhere, that we keep it all local. And thanks to, excuse me, thanks to Mr. Coons, Bill Waddell, this was at the Waddell Client Service Center in Westgate, Mary Ann McMinn, Ray McMinn, Susan Riddle in our office, all the great staff. But by three o'clock Brenda Wheeler, we had seven intake folks that day, by three o'clock Brenda told me she'd seen 100 families just by herself, just for school supplies on that day. So, but by five o'clock, everything was gone. I had someone call the other day, say, have you gotten all the extra supplies at schools yet? And I said, well, not yet, because there are, there are no extra supplies. But we are, we are buying some more, Bill and Susan are always cutting deals with Target and Walmart and getting things donated and things, you know, pennies on the dollar, so we've got more coming in. But it was probably the best days, I think, that we've ever had. But again, everything we do, all this belongs to the community, Evelyn belongs to everyone. So our old history teacher, well, Mr. Conley, not old, but older than we are. You know, Mr. Conley said that a long time ago, he said, what I like about Evelyn is it belongs to everybody. So our outreach with the schools and everybody here is just part of what your outreach is. There's, there's no separation as far as we're concerned. Yesterday, we received 50,000 snacks in for our Food for Thought program for schools, again, in partnership with Ingalls. Three years ago, we couldn't get any snacks at all. It was a great, it's a great program, it's been running for about 12 years and all of a sudden food started drying up, grocery industry changed. We, we used to have a room about this big floor to ceiling of cases of snacks. Three years ago when school started, we didn't have a single one and couldn't find one. We were, Ingalls was always kind, sold to us at cost, but our cost then went up from two cents a snack to almost 20 cents a snack. It takes about 150,000 snacks a year to run that program. So Ingalls, we talked with them, we reinvented it, now it's the Ingalls Evelyn Food for Thought Program. And yesterday, we got our first shipment in, a little more than 50,000 snacks and Evelyn's cost was absolutely nothing. So we're able to do more and more work by partnerships, by, by working together. You know, having a great partner is not doubling our effort, it's, you know, quadrupling, it's 100 times what we do ourselves. But we had one lady last, this last year, came up to Susan Riddle in our office and she said, I don't know what I would do if you hadn't been here with the school supplies. Said, I wasn't going to have my daughter register for high school this year because we couldn't afford paper or pencils. And we see students in our office all the time, a great partnership graduation initiative we have with Buckingham County Schools. So we see them having to drop out because their parents have lost a job or father or mother are sick or, or one young man needed a bicycle because he had to work and he couldn't leave school and get to McDonald's to work on time. So by buying him a bicycle, he stayed in school and graduated. We see that every single day. We've never had anyone come up to us and say, I wasn't going to let my daughter go to school because we couldn't afford paper or pencil. And that's, I don't necessarily think that's the school board's job or a teacher's job, but it's all our responsibility and together you can see what we can do. All of us did this together and we've got more school supplies coming in for all of you teachers too and board and staff. You know, anything you need to hurt during the year, this, we don't just do this at the beginning of the year and then stop. We know within a few weeks, papers used up, pencils are gone. You know, so we've got, we have more coming in or just individually, you know, just call us. I know everybody here has my cell phone number and our, right now it's on the website. You can certainly call and we'll make sure you get everything that you need. But thank you again for the great honor of us just being part of, part of this and part of what you all do. So, and I could answer any quick questions too if anybody has.
Thank you, Brian.
My pleasure, thank you all.
Board members, check your calendar, September 17th is a very important date. That is the Teacher of the Year banquet and it will be held this year at the Renaissance downtown. The event will begin at 6:30 and Ms. Blunt, I think I'm okay. We've already put that, posted this on our web, but congratulations to the following teachers. Inca, that is Stacy Kip, Irwin, Carol Covington, North Moncom, Mike Bowman, Owen Terry Quick, Reynolds, Heather Reifser, and Robertson is Jane Brown. So congratulations to those teachers, and we want to make sure we're there on September 17th. Finally, I want to acknowledge that this evening, the Board of Education meeting, this will be the first time that it will actually be televised at the request of and authorized by you, the board. We will be utilizing the services of an outside contractor, Mr. Grant Gillette, Grant's in the, in the back. Instructions on how to access the video will be provided on the school system website. So this is the most entertaining show in town, so if you want to go back and catch certain segments that you, for whatever reason, you might have fallen asleep during, you can do that. But the video will be available live online. So we'll also have it done on a delay basis with Education Channel, Cable 16, if you have cable. So with that, closing comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baldwin. We have no reports, so we'll move on to employee service recognition. Ms. Blunt?
Good evening, Vice Chairman, and Dr. Baldwin, members of the board. We have a number of people with us today. This is one of the bigger times of the year for us, and the employee recognition, as we have more people who come on board with us in August and September than any other time. I have a couple of people who said they were coming and haven't checked in with me, so I'll call your names. If you're not here, don't come on. First of all, we have Gardner Bridges, who I'm happy to say is with us at Joe P. Evelyn Intermediate School, where he is the Assistant Principal. He was also our principal at Johnston, he's taught at Glen Arden, and has been seen at various other places around the school. And Gardner has survived 20 years with Moncom County Schools. Mr. Craig's on hand. I forgot to call him down. Bob knows to jump, and Chip forgotten. Hey, one of the suspects who didn't sign in, Susan Gasper-Sonar, are you here? She is? Aha. She's at Enka Middle School, but because you didn't see me, I don't know what you teach, so tell us what you teach. Math, seventh grade math, ooh, seventh grade math. And she also is with us for 20 years, all with seventh grade math?
All in Enka.
All in Enka, well, very good. Thank you very much. Any relationship to you, the name is New York?
Yeah, that's my husband.
And Sarah is with us from North Moncom Middle, where you teach?
Spanish.
Spanish. Hold on. Thanks very much. Sandra's with us from Oakley Elementary. She's a kindergarten teacher and also spent nine years with us in Title I and Title II classrooms, as a classroom teacher. Thank you, Sandra. We have Deborah Morgan with us this evening from Enka High School. Deborah started with us in 1982, I believe. I was just a child. I think I'd been teaching for about six years at that time. Works in the Distance Learning Program at Enka for all those years?
No.
No, I was going to say, I don't think we've had Distance Learning for 20 years.
I've been teaching about every grade up. Eight years at the hospital.
Eight years. And so where were you before Enka?
Sandhill.
Sandhill. All right. Now that a while. So thank you very much, Debbie, for your service, 20 years. And from Charles T. Coons Intermediate, Coons is here, we can have them stand up and give you this award as well. We have Delana Pay Parker, who has been a sixth grade teacher, English Language Arts and Social Studies, and you spent 10 years in an interim fourth grade, I don't know what that means.
Yeah, I was three months, starting out in the fourth grade, and then I taught fourth grade for nine years, taught third grade.
Very good. But where did you, Coons hasn't been here?
Barnardsville.
Okay, Barnardsville. All right, very good. Thank you so much. We have Jane Patterson from Oakley Elementary, who also was at Barnardsville, probably 17 years.
Still there.
Still there too. And Jane is a music specialist, so you travel a little bit, is what you're saying, and you also were at Glen Arden or are still before that.
Before that.
So very good, for 20 years as a music specialist. You've survived. And if you're here, Christopher Thompson from Irwin High School. There he is. Now, you just came up at the World, I believe, Mr. Thompson. You are now the Assistant Principal at Irwin, and what were you doing prior to that?
I was at Reynolds Middle, that's a special education at Irwin.
Very good, sir. And so you've had 10 years with Moncom County Schools, and we appreciate it very much. Before we get to the other news of the evening, we have a late-breaking news story. Christie Chief called me from the Mountain State Fair to say that in the Career Tech Division, they have a booth out there, and they actually judged the booths today. And I'm happy to say that Owen High School, who presented the colors tonight, won the second place Career Tech Booth at the Mountain State Fair, and you all can see that booth anytime between now and next Sunday, not this Sunday, but the following Sunday, the 15th. And also, while you're there, I understand that Enka High School has some good news that you may not be aware of. Enka High School's Special Education Program also has a booth, and they won first place for their booth. I recently received an email from a former board member, Dr. Richard Green. He told me about a young lady who was a rising senior last year. Her name is Brittany Edgerton, and she pretty happened to be walking through the halls near the counseling office at A.C. Reynolds High School when she saw a poster that caught her eye. And Brittany applied for the North Carolina Community Development Initiative's Summer Youth Leadership Program. She was the only student from the entire Asheville area invited to participate in that program. The program places high school seniors in summer internships in community organizations around the state. It exposes students to lots of challenges, solutions for helping the state's poorest communities grow economically, and it gives them very valuable work experience and life skills. Not only did Brittany represent our area with, along with about two dozen other students across the state, she was also selected by her colleagues and by the staff in the program to represent the class as the class leader. And that was a great thing, Brittany thought, until she got this little note from the head of the department or from the head of the program, who said that along with this honor, you'll have to write and give a five-minute speech. And Brittany did that. It's on a video, which I haven't been able to get through our filters, so I'll see it someday. But as she, Brittany comes forward and introduces her, I'd like to introduce you to Brittany. I'd like to tell you that Kimberly Askew with the program says to Brittany, Brittany's respect among your peers is the best example of leadership. I commend you for all you've done throughout the internship. You are a standout individual, and you always rise to the occasion. So here to introduce Brittany is Dora Sellers, Principal at A.C. Reynolds High School.
Thank you. Brittany is very, very easy to introduce to you tonight, Dr. Baldwin. When I first came around to High School, I remember seeing this student that was always fun, always friendly, would always come by every single day in the cafeteria and say, hello, how are you today? And that's, and she has continued to do that year after year, and she is very deserving of what she has accomplished. And I'm going to present her now, she's got a few words to say to you.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for the honor. This internship was eight-week program. We actually got to internship at nonprofit organizations. I was placed at Handmade in America Downtown, and what they do is they revitalize small towns through craft. So we have 14 small towns in western North Carolina, and what they do is they try to go to each town and see what they can revitalize and build it through craft. So what I did was I made a database for the 14 small towns, because they had all this information and had no place to put it. So I made a database, and I put the 14 small towns and what they did in the past and what worked in a database that they can go to and look for the rest of the organization. And I feel really honored to be able to help them in that major way. During eight-week program, we had to go to Raleigh for two weeks. I had to walk in front of my peers, and it really gave me good speaking skills. Mr. Adol Bachi, Tare, Ken Chen, Kimberly Askew, all of them were very sweet. They taught us a lot of lessons about ourselves and how to treat others. It was about leadership skills. I learned that life's, you know, problems, and you need to build off of character and dignity and keep going on with our lives. And I really liked the honor of being selected out of 300 students in North Carolina. Only 24 got picked. I'm the only one from Asheville, so I was the only one in western North Carolina, actually. It was an amazing experience. I would do it again if I could, if I could do it next year, I could, but I loved it. And I thank you for the honor for letting me come and talk to you guys. Anyone have any questions?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Brittany, is your family with us?
It's Stan family.
Thank you so much for being with us this evening. And more good news, last spring I was very privileged to be at Irwin High School for an exciting competition. Some people might have thought about baseball, or soccer, or football as exciting competitions, but no, nothing compares to what I witnessed amongst the middle schools of this county who competed with each other, in fact, several teams from each school, in the Altrusel Spelling Bee. And they were some serious spellers. So I'd like to introduce you to the President of Altrusa International from the Asheville area. Barbara.
Bell.
Bell, Barbara Bell, that hard name. Barbara Bell, I thought I knew it. Barbara Bell, stand-up, from Altrusa International. And I would just like to say that they conducted a fantastic event. The audience was full of excited parents and siblings and friends. It just went so well, and what brave spellers. And thank you, thank you, because as Barbara's going to tell you, there's another side benefit to this whole thing for Moncom County Schools and our foundation. So Barbara, of course.
Vice Chair Craig, Dr. Baldwin, board members. Altrusa is a mainly women's organization to promote better community through service. One of the things that Altrusa of Asheville does is that every year we fund a non-traditional student in the second year at AB Tech. This was a fundraiser for us to raise money to fund our scholarship program, as well as contribute $1,000 to the Moncom County School Foundation. We had some wonderful spellers. And the two teams that won, I'd like to present to them tonight. Kane Creek Middle School in second place. If you would come forward, the students who were here, they were represented by Haley Wilk, Maggie Williams, Matthew Sumner, Emily Davis, and Brooke Omen. And if your principal would come up too. We are very pleased.
While the photograph is in action, let me tell you that all of this board's students have risen to the high school, so thank you for coming.
Matthew is representing us all, and we were glad that he did. In first place was A.C. Reynolds Middle School, represented by Ewan Yin, Montana Williams, and Molly Pruitt. So would those of you who are here come up as well as your principal? Congratulations.
And we have seventh graders, so we expect great things. There are eighth graders this year.
I think that was the choke word that night, fear of the number 13. And I remember I was holding the flip chart because it was rocking, and when that word was pronounced, the students just, everybody in the room gasped, the students went, and then one of the students nodded the head and proceeded to write and spell triskodeca-phobia correctly. I cannot spell triskodeca-phobia. We thank you very much for the honor of being here tonight. I'd like the families of the students who are here, if you'd just stand up, because you supported these students. It was a wonderful family evening, and it couldn't have happened without the parents. And we were glad that we were able to do it in the evening, so that the parents who worked during the day could participate in something with their children. And we worked with Debbie Goodwin, who unfortunately has retired, but we look forward to working with Eric Brandt this year. Thank you very much.
So did you write down triskodeca? I thought that one was. Thank you. That's all.
All right, next we have the curriculum teacher.
Yes, for 23 years, elementary schools have had Jostens or SuccessMaker computer labs. As our students have begun to be more technology-littered, our staff's more technology-littered, technology is a priority of our district, we thought it time to revisit that traditional computer lab setting. We had teams of teacher leaders and staff work hard this summer to revitalize our new labs, and I'm going to ask Ms. Candy Sellers to come and unveil our new digital teaching and learning labs.
Thank you, Dr. Baldwin and the board. Speaking of technology, I'm going to say the thing that I'm most thankful for with technology is spell check, because I am not the speller that those young folks are. So I'm thankful for spell check. We did work hard this summer. We've worked the whole year using our M-Tech committee to kind of revise how we use our computer labs in our elementary schools and intermediate schools. We know it's time to address the issues of the global awareness, 21st century learning with our students, and we're very excited about our labs. And we have already started utilizing those labs. Our lab managers are excited, our teachers are excited, and it is a learning curve for all of us, so we're learning as we, as we go. But it's working out wonderfully, and we can't wait to see, at the end of the year, as we look back and evaluate, we can't wait to see the progress that we've made and look at the things that we need to do even better next year. I am going to start by sharing just a little bit of information about what we're doing the first five weeks in those labs. We're making sure that we look at our online safety. In Moncom County, we have provided with K through our 12, K through 12, a comprehensive plan that meets the requirements outlined in our North Carolina Essential Standards and the Children's Internet Protection Act for schools that receive E-rate discounts. So our students in K-12 participate in face-to-face Moodle-based instruction to demonstrate mastery of those concepts. Our K-5 students receive direct instruction and completion of Moodle activities. Our 6 through 12 students, they have demonstration of mastery of those skills via an age-appropriate Moodle. And then K-12, integration of content into our classroom instruction by teachers and media coordinators. And also our K-12 documentation of student participation accomplished through, via the Moodle. So we have documentation that we're meeting those standards. So our students have already started working on those moodles. They're working- They're working on keyboarding skills. And then I'm gonna introduce to you Jane Hood and Wendy Fusco, who are our tech facilitators. And they're gonna share with you what we're doing to integrate our social studies and science content into a project-based learning through our labs. Our goal is for our labs to be an extension of the classroom, to be that, just that, learning lab. So, at this time, I'm gonna ask Jane and Wendy to come forward and share some of our wonderful activities going on in our labs and what our lab managers, along with the teacher in the classroom, are doing to help our students become twenty-first century learners. Now, since we're working with technology, I can let you look over there because you don't need to look at me. So, focus that direction and I don't have to be the sage on the stage, I can be the guide on the side. That's what you do when you don't know what to do, is you problem solve. So, as we look at the ISTI standards, and ISTI is the International Society for Technology and Education. They want students, as you want your own children, to be creative, to be innovators, to be able to communicate, to be able to effective collaborate together, to research, to be able to use tools that will tell you what the research is, to define your research, to critical think, to problem solve, to make those decisions. We want all of our personal children, our school children, and adults that you live with and beside, to be able to solve problems in the real world. So, we want children to think, why do I drive on the parkway and park in the driveway? Those are kinds of questions that you want them to just ponder. Also, why is it sky blue? They've been asking those questions for years. When they figure out these questions, where do they go? What do they do? How do they solve their, their problems? So, we decided when we looked at our labs, we had used a program for twenty-three years and it was good, it served its purpose, but it was time for a new start. So, we restructured our labs, gave them new names, and we decided to call them Digital Teaching and Learning Labs. Because everything is digital in there and so here are some tools that we could have children use. We have a lot of iPads these days, we have a lot of digital cameras, we have eye touches. And Mr. Coates, you and I have an appointment with this GPS unit, okay? We've been trying to make an appointment to, to use one of these with a bunch of students. We give these to students to teach them because they can't drive cars. This may look outdated to you, but they can't drive a car. So, we want them to experience all these digital tools so that they will be able to problem solve and pick the right one for them. So, as Ms. Sommer was saying, we have created moodles for the students. The K-2 students will go through an example as you see here. We have a logo, we want students to keep safe, keep away, and keep telling. So, as the K-2 are instructed through the Moodle, they will earn a certificate at the end. As the 3-5 goes through the Moodle themselves and they do the activities and they go over the journals, then they will learn internet safety. We were reading a few of the journal responses this afternoon and they've already watched two videos. Spelling wasn't that great on their journals, but we got the point across of the first things they need to make sure they don't give out personal information on the computer. So, it's already working. And we got a lot of information, NetSmart is a great resource provider for us and we've used it several different places. The next thing that we did in our digital labs is we looked at the curriculum, of course, with the new Common Core, the essential standards. We took, and you can see the different color codes, can't read it really well, but we took the Science, Social Studies, and the ELA sections and we decided to put them in the nine-week sections. So that every student would get the curriculum across the county, not necessarily the same way, but in the same timeframe, so that they would all have the standards. And then we took those a little bit further and we went to the Web 2.0 tools that we know that are available. You don't know what a Web 2.0 tool is when I go on the internet and I interact. I can do Word clouds, I can do little bird tales. And as you see the stairs stepping across, we don't want students to repeat Web 2.0 tools. So, we gave a good starting point in kindergarten and then when should that tool, you know, be self-sustaining, they could do it themselves? When do we start it in third and fourth? And we listed a bunch of different web tools. After we go through that, we want projects for the kids to do. So, but the first thing we have to do in order to give them projects is to teach them how to type because this method is not working really well. So, we have a program that, and you can see this right here, can't see it very well, but we have a program that all second through fifth grade students are going online. And you can see we have quite a few stars and quite a few in the nineties that will tell them how many words per minute. And if you would like an account, if you are having trouble typing, I can give you one also. But it's a really nice program. Okay, so after we go through that, we have now created, off of the Bunkham County School homepage, a curriculum connection link for the students. They can go to this link during the day or even when they go home. So, an example would be, let's say, a kindergartner will go to the link, they can either click on the icon or they can click on the words and they will have activities for them to do in the computer lab with the teacher and the lab manager. Here's a fifth grade page. And that's what a fifth grade page would look like, Science, Social Studies, Math, and Language Arts. They're going to be creating projects because as we said, creation is the highest level of the taxonomy. So, we have a few to show you.
I will. We transitioned so well. All right, you're drawing. One of the things that's wonderful about our jobs as tech facilitators is that we get to go in and we get to work with the teachers and we get to help them, help the students create projects. And we always start with the curriculum, talking with the teachers about what's coming, what are they going to be doing, what are they gonna be covering? And we start the planning process. And the two that we have to show you tonight, one is a kindergarten project. We, in talking with the curriculum coach and the teacher, we decided to focus in on pattern writing. And with that, we have the standards here, is that they will use a combination of drawing, dictating, and writing to compose informative, explanatory text. And tell about events, things of that nature. So, what we did was the teacher had the students draw out a book, make a physical book. Because our kindergarten, our kindergarten children need that tactile skill as well as being able to use a pencil, use crayons. And so, they built a book based on the people in the school, around the school, to tell who the person was, what that person did, and to say thank you. And so, every child, it was the pattern, the pattern of the writing. The children used digital cameras, went around the school taking pictures. We walked them through and helped them upload those photographs. Five and six-year-olds uploading these photos, showed them once and they were experts by the second one. And then we turned them loose on a Web 2.0 tool called Little Bird Tales. And when I play the video, you will see there are pauses. And the thing about those pauses is that the five and six-year-olds were doing it themselves. They were clicking the record button, they were reading their own writing, and they were drawing pictures to go with those writings. The next example that I'm gonna show is a second grade class where their standard is science. And we focused on, can get my eyes on it here, the fact that they have living organisms. And so, they summarize the life cycles of the animals. And in particular, this one is frogs. But the fact that they're also reaching the technology standards of using tools to plan to do those types of things. Where they're collecting information, they present information through audio, visual, and using online collaboration tools. So, they were using Web 2.0 tools. First one we have is the kindergarten. You create it through the Web 2.0 tool of Little Bird Tales, but then you can actually save it and download it as a video. So, they end up creating a video when it's all said and done.
Hi, I am a fox, let me tell you about my life. I am a amphibian and I am also a vivid because I lay eggs. I go and watch her sometimes, I eat bugs yum. Some of us lay four thousand eggs at a time. So, if a predator eats some of them, there will be some, there will be some still left.
Now, these children, they could do other things, but by putting them, and putting digital tools in their hands, they get excited about learning, it stays with them. And we are excited that these digital teaching and learning labs are going to be producing more of that. And the fact that our kindergartners are just as capable as our fifth graders. They create wonderful, wonderful projects that are educationally sound and tied directly to the first.
I know when you did your report on frogs, you wrote it on paper, right? Yeah, this is much more fun. And as she was saying, if we can engage students, the excitement is there, it brings it on and creation is the result. This is what I want you to take home as a reminder. We're giving them tools to put in their toolbox. And when you go to see yours and you buy that nineteen-piece toolbox, little, this thing, when do you use this? You can answer me, when do you use this? When you need it, okay? When you need it, is the only time you got, so we're gonna give kids tools that they're gonna use it for that activity. They're going to need them as they go through. They're going to need collaborations, Skype, Google Hangout, email, you know, all kinds of Web 2.0 tools in order to get that job that we don't even know what it is. So, we are so excited about this year, about the projects that students will create and you will be seeing a whole lot more. So, check our website out.
At this time, it's time for public comment. Again, it's limited to three minutes. And what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna let you know when it's three minutes and I'll give you an extra ten seconds and then I'll be rude and cut you off. So, I'll give you a heads up in three minutes. Somebody, you wanna call out the names, Ms. Flood?
I'll catch that on the way back, I knew I was gonna do that. Mr. Vice Chairman, superintendent, board members, thank you very much. I'm here to speak on one of your agenda items, which is the censure of board members. And there's a lot I could say, but I think it really comes down to this. So, I was thinking about this, sitting here and listening to all the wonderful things that are going on here. But there are three laws of nature, as it were, that come to mind. One is that if anything can go wrong, it will. The first corollary to that is before something can be done, something else must be done. And the third, and probably most important, is the law of unintended consequences. And that is what I'd like to speak to in the issue of the censure of board members. So, I read over this, I looked at, at language that says, conduct committed by a board member which tends to injure the good name of the Bunkham County Board of Education and/or undermine the effectiveness of Bunkham, I can hardly read this. Of Bunkham County Schools or the Board of Education. One of the things that occurred to me is, am I in the United States of America? Democracy is a very messy thing. Democracy is meant to bring about conflict because that's what we're all about, we disagree. Sometimes we disagree vehemently. But to have a censured resolution brings us to the law of unintended consequences. brings us to the law of unintended consequences. Very few people would like to be highlighted on Drudge Report. And I'm reasonably sure that if the board decides to go ahead with this ill-thought-through, censured possibility, that it is likely to wind up on Drudge Report and have exactly the reverse of what you intend. That is, if you wish to protect the good name of the board, don't do this. And I thank you for your time. Thank you. I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Mark Gates. Hello, my name is Mark Gates. Thanks for the opportunity to speak here. I do want to read Policy Code 2118, Censure of Board Members. For any violation of law or policy or any conduct committed by a board member which tends to injure the good name of the Buncombe County Board of Education. You guys just talked about unpermitted work and doing inspections. You didn't even do the inspections on the work that was unpermitted. That injures the name of the board. I mean, come on, the work was unpermitted. And you did inspections on microwaves. Why not the, why not the work that was unpermitted? That was done. That's what you should do. That's what injures the name of the board. But I got some other things, too. A board member recently said to me, "The lies you are spreading as facts are slanderous." And I take great offense to that. Another comment from that same board member, "All lies, nothing from you today otherwise." And I challenge anyone in this room to prove that I have told a single lie about anything. Another board member, "What do you and your spouse do for a living?" Well, I'm not an elected official. And my, I don't have a spouse that works and is a public employee paid by taxpayers. What gives anybody on this board the right to question a private citizen like that? That is nothing but arrogance. That's straight-out arrogance. If you're going to pass a censure policy and you're not willing to deal with issues like that, then your censure policy is nothing but hypocrisy. And if you're going to do that, then you might as well name the censure policy, "Let's Bash Lisa Baldwin." That's what you should name it because that's all you're trying to do. That's what you're trying to accomplish, and you should be embarrassed. Injuring the name of the Buncombe County Schools. When you have board members that accuse other people of lying, when you have board members that are trying to dig up dirt on a private citizen and their family, that injures the name of the Buncombe County Schools. And that should be unacceptable. That's what you should be censoring. The fact that you're willing to ignore unpermitted work and inspect microwaves and refrigerators, you should be embarrassed. That injures the name of the Buncombe County Schools. Now, I hate to rush out of here, but my son is actually at a Buncombe County school right now, and I'm late, so I got to go get him.
Well, I felt, I felt like a mosquito that nudist called me when I first got here tonight. A lot of places to go. The two previous people before me have covered a lot of the points that I've been thinking about. I want to encourage this board to pass this resolution because that gives any member of this board, and that includes Lisa, to point out in public who that board member was that called somebody a liar, who that board member was that was on the internet posting things. That gives her the right to do that. That's one of the unintended consequences, folks. You better think long and hard before you pass it because it can be turned on each one of you. Now, the next thing that's so important, and it happened right here tonight in this room. And Pat, I saw you ask a very sensible question about microwaves. And he, we had a person make a presentation about you worried about microwaves. Well, now let me ask you a question. There is a law that you can't have a microwave for the house in the school. How many schools have it? We all agree, even the head of Fire Marshal's office here, agree. They're in county offices. They're in fire stations. They're everywhere. Thank you, Lisa, for asking that question about permits. Because had you not asked that question, they would not have looked in the buildings, and they wouldn't have found those microwaves. And now that this is announced on public TV, and thank you, Amy, for working to get this televised publicly, all the citizens out there know something. We have a fire breakout in the school. We have a fire breakout in the county building. And we find a microwave refrigerator in there that is for a house only? We have just opened up a great big lawsuit because it's not supposed to be in there. And did it cause a problem? So maybe her initial question has gotten us to a point to where even this board would agree. And I think all the citizens would agree. That's a stupid-ass law. It needs to be repealed. We would not have that decision and not be in that position had she not asked that question. So we should never stop questions, period. End of discussion.
Are they all the same?
Got a different number on the front, but they're all the same. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Censure policy? I don't think you want to be embarrassed. I wouldn't pass it. I think it's a condemnation to your own self if you do. And I think they draw supposedly, say that you're Christians. I can't judge you. But everyone professes to have that church-going attitude. So heed that without sin casts the first stone. I think that is where you need to focus. You need to put your heart where your mouth is and your mouth where your heart is. Because from the abundance of the heart, the mouth speaks. If I talked like a minister, I guess I'd raise my voice. You give me a good foundation. That's all I want to say about the censure policy because I think it speaks for itself. Somebody did introduce it, there'd be the, you'd be the first one that it'd be used on. Now, the disk out, pass out. Thank you, Ms. Baldwin. You don't even know what's on the disk. But thank you for bringing up the concern about the contamination here at this site and other sites. And I am bringing up the contamination point at INCA site at BASF. I'm a man of very much knowledge. I've got some pictures on this, two pictures of a map, and some other pictures that the board is supposedly saw. But the connection was not made until 2013 because in 2010, that was just after Ms. Baldwin came on board, the property was not discussed in full. It was talked about, the property at INCA. But if it had not been the advocacy of Ms. Baldwin talking about the contamination, the site on top of the hill would not be chosen today for the place for the school site. Because one of the maps that I gave you tonight on this disk, and I've got many more. It's not all. I'm not giving everything at once. But on this map, it shows that the school, future school site, was down at the bottom of the pit where the damage of all the contaminants are at the BASF property, at the INCA center. The INCA center is around the most contaminated piece of the property. And the ball fields are on it, too. And the future school site is on it, too. And if you look at the real picture that the board gave, that your architect gave to the board, to Mr. Baldwin, he specifies the INCA center, and then in quote marks, he specifies BASL. And if you see those two together and you see these pictures I gave you, you're going to make the connection that Ms. Baldwin had a great advocacy about it. And she didn't even know it and won't know it till she opens up her disk and sees it because I haven't said anything. I know, those three minutes are very short, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry. You have 10 seconds.
That's okay. We've got it on disk, and a picture is worth 1,000 words. So you've got 4,000 words, folks.
I went back there and signed up at a rather late date after an hour and a half of listening to good news and presentations. I sat there scratching my head, thinking, "I'm hearing half-truths." I listened to the Tools for Schools, and with all due respect, Mr. Murdoch, I don't find pleasure in thinking that we have 1,000 students lined up to get book bags, pencils, papers, etc. Families on the porch waited nine hours. As we stand, as you stand as a school board, as I stood as a teacher, there was a time in my career where I had pencils, paper, reams of paper to run copies of what I needed. Prior to my retirement, I watched it decline. School supplies dwindled for the teachers. However, other things increased. Pay for administration. Let me hit upon $589,000 a year for extra duty pay for principals and assistant principals in Buncombe County. That means the high school principal sitting in here gets $12,000 a year, extra duty pay. If there are any teachers sitting in this room, you're doing without reams of paper. If there are any parents sitting in this room, you're being asked to bring reams of paper to the schoolhouse. There's a problem here, and this board needs to address it. You don't need to be pulling from school supply money. You need to be giving to these teachers and these students. Bless our community for helping, Mr. Murdoch. But these families that are picking up these crayons didn't do it 10 years ago. These families, and I as the teacher,